Good evening, everybody. I'd like to bring the meeting to order. Could we please have the roll call?
Sure.
Blue?
Here.
Bozeman?
Here.
Dissheroon?
Here.
Pohlshouser?
Here.
Humbles?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Sowen?
Here.
Okay, could everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a regime and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'd like to welcome Carrie Ricky here tonight. We're happy to have her back. Welcome. And at this time, we'll move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Mr. Merker will begin with the superintendent's report.
I want to start off tonight in a little bit of a somber tone, and it sends me to have to talk about school violence, but that's the environment that we're in today. For our parents and students and our staff that's here out in the audience, you all need to understand that we never forget as a school district about school violence, but when you have a tragedy such as happened in Florida recently, it heightens our awareness, it brings it up to the fore again, brings it up to the front. It's in front of everyone right now. You can't turn on any news broadcast without seeing something in regards to school violence, and that's appropriate. You know, there were seventeen lives senselessly lost in Florida in that tragedy. So, as a school district, what do we do? Where do we concentrate? Do we concentrate on security? Do we concentrate on students? What do we do? This issue for us isn't about guns. It's not about bump stocks. It's not about mental health. What this is about for us is what can we do here? If you looked at our board meeting in January seventeenth and on our board agenda tonight, you saw that in both of those, we had security as a discussion point in executive session. This is not something that the board was waiting for an event to talk about. This is something that the board has been engaged in, and we continue to look at what we can do, what we should be doing. For me, as you look at the personal side with students, I believe that, and this is just my personal opinion, relationships are key to prevention of school violence. The more relationships we can develop with kids, the better relationships we can develop with kids, the better we can help kids to grow. I think that's when prevention happens. If you study any of school shootings and school violence issues that have been prevented, how were those prevented? They were prevented because somebody is talking to somebody else. That's key. We have to have that. Our board and our district are constantly looking for how to improve our school environment for kids. We work on that. In the short time that I've been here, it's obvious and clear that we work on that. From the security side, we've taken small steps. Tonight, we're hopefully going to be approving hall monitors here at the high school. As you walk into high school, you see just a different setup than you see in each of the other school buildings. We know that, we recognize that. We're going to take a measure tonight to hire some hall monitors, which will be in place. And, you know, some people might call those folks security, but it'll be somebody at the door. It'll be a body. It'll be persons there to help us. Another measure that you're going to hear coming out from us is we're going to be starting a tip line. We're going to call our tip line the three-two-three safety line, and it'll be a line that'll be advertised online in the district. It'll be on all of our websites. It'll be an opportunity for folks to anonymously get tips to us, to get information to us, to talk to us. And what we would hope is that kids will come and talk to their teachers, that kids will come and talk to their counselors, that they'll talk to their principals. But if that doesn't happen, we've got an opportunity for someone to make a contact to us and get information to us. I'm back to my point of, somebody has got to talk to somebody. This is just going to be another opportunity for that to happen here in our school district. Look for a letter from me tomorrow that will speak to that. It's not operational yet, but it will be within the next week or so. When you get through those kinds of things, then the thinking, okay, well, what's next? Well, you have to understand that the board is looking at options, ideas. Administratively, we've looked at options and ideas. We had a principals' meeting last week where we had a healthy discussion, and a robust discussion about what should we be doing. We need to be sure of what we do. We don't want to just be reactive. We want to be proactive. We don't want to do something that's not going to be effective, but at the same time, we have to recognize the concerns that are out there, and we have to be involved. And I think that's what I want to end with, is to just assure you that we, as a board and as a district, we are aware, we are active, we are engaged, we are involved. Be assured that we did not, we will not, forget about school violence and safety for our kids. Now, after all of that, let me see if I can shift over to maybe a little more positive tone and introduce Mr. Adrian, who has something that our district is all about. Thank you, Mr. Merker.
Yeah, we're going to switch gears a little bit and go to what we really focus on, which is students. And Franny Verbal to come up here with me. Normally, I wouldn't read from this, but I honestly, to do, I don't want to do her a disservice, so I want to read the things that I've got written down here, so. Franny is a senior here at DHS and is wrapping up an outstanding high school experience. Franny is the daughter of Jeff and Sarah Verbal. She is one of those students that took advantage of all that we have to offer here at DHS and made the most of her time in the high school. Though we have many, many outstanding students and student athletes, Franny has distinguished herself from all the rest, not only on a local level, but on a state and national level as well. From my perspective, I find Franny to be uniquely determined, insightful, passionate, and compassionate. Franny is a winner on all fronts, and she embodies student growth and achievement. What Franny has done here at DHS includes, but please understand, is not limited to, she's been a commended national merit scholar, which means she's in the top three percent of all students in the country. She's one of our, at this present time, we've got a dead battery on this, unfortunately, I'm loud. At this present time, she's one of our seventeen Ballantyne Torians. She's an Illinois State Scholar, which means she's in the top ninety-fifth percentile in the state of Illinois. She's chosen by our faculty as our Daughter of the American Revolution, Good Citizenship Scholarship winner. Franny's essay, I'll get into that, is currently still in play, the state-chosen essay, so she's still in contention for that as well. She's chosen by our Social Science Department as our Lincoln Award winner for the student that best embodies the qualities of Abraham Lincoln. She's the class president as a freshman, sophomore, and junior, and this year, she's our student body president, and she helped lead our hurricane efforts to Houston, the Garfield Elementary, so she was very pivotal in that movement, where we raised over twenty thousand dollars in cash and over thirty tons of supplies. She's a three-time All-State runner in cross-country and a two-time All-State runner in track. I'm getting cold chills, I'm going to read this. A leader on our 2017 state championship track team and our 2017 cross-country team. She has completed over two-hundred-and-forty hours of community service during her high school years, and most recently, Franny has been honored by the Illinois High School Association with their Most Prestigious Award by being named to their Academic All-State Team. So Franny is one of thirteen girls and thirteen boys in the state of Illinois to receive such an honor. On April sixteenth, Mrs. Kazalit, her coach and I will accompany her and her family up to Bloomington, Illinois, for a beautiful banquet that will have to honor Franny and the other twenty-five recipients, and also receive a one-thousand-dollar cash award from Caterpillar, the event sponsor. So Franny will continue the Verbal legacy and will continue, will attend the Air Force Academy in the fall and be a member of the cross-country and track teams. She will be a pre-med major, attend medical school, and hope to one day serve her country. I think we can all agree that Franny Verbal not only embodies the personal characteristics of someone we would like to represent Dumbland High School, but someone we would be proud to have represent our country. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you Franny Verbal.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the public participation portion. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? If so, could you please be sure that you've signed in? Is there anybody? Raise your hand if you'd like to address the board. Okay. Then this will conclude the public participation portion of the meeting, and we'll now move on to information discussion items. School activity account reports are available for the board's review. Are there any questions? Information regarding the high school random drug testing for the month of January is available for the board's review. Mrs. Kazalit is available to answer questions. Are there questions? Mrs. Bozeman will present information regarding, I'm sorry, Bowman. Okay, Mrs. Bowman will present information regarding the future ready one-to-one technology plans.
Okay, and I've got a couple of people here with me tonight that are going to come up and share some information as well. I know that this is your two of our implementations, so this should be familiar to many of you, but I wanted to give you kind of a recap of what's been going on, where we're at as far as progress goes, and let you know what the plan is moving forward. So, with that, this is just an overview of our mission. It was just up there for everybody to look at, and this was developed by our one-to-one technology committee, and we're really continuing to look at these goals and make certain that this is what's being met in each of our classrooms that have implemented. Remember, this current year, all students in grades four through eight have one-to-one devices, have the Chromebooks. This is the long-range, the three-year plan that I just put up there as well. We're currently in the, you know, 2017-18 school year, so four through eight have these. We have piloted some iPad management software this year, and now we're taking a look at where we're at as far as moving forward for next school year with our plan to move forward. We would like to move forward at the high school level. This is some data that we track through a system we have called Hipara, and I wanted to share this slide with you because I think it's very important to point out that we've been very focused throughout this entire plan on providing professional development for our teachers. And you can see, every time we've had a professional development opportunity for our teachers, you see a spike in usage by the teachers. So, back in January of 2017, we had a big institute day that was focused on technology, and then you could see the usage around January 2017 really spiked, and this is just tracking, like I said, teacher and staff usage of devices. Over the summer months, of course, things trail off, but we provided a lot of learning opportunities for our teachers over the summer, and then you can see that when they returned in August, that usage again jumped up again. So, it's just great to see the growth and development that they have made, and our two instructional technology coaches, who will be here to share a little information in a bit, have been hugely instrumental in that process as well. This is device access inside of the school. Of course, you would expect for the usage to go up once we're adding, you know, about eighteen hundred devices in grades four through eight, and you can see that that definitely, we are on that upward trajectory. You do see, we do have a higher number of students that are on devices for longer periods of time, but I still think it's quite balanced, and it's just good to be continuing to track this and take a look at that. Along with that, we're also tracking device usage outside of the school day. I know that that was, we wanted to make sure that there wasn't too much usage outside of the day, you know, teachers weren't just providing homework for the sake of providing extra homework on those devices, and of course, there is an uptick in use, but the kids are taking the devices home. One thing that, as we get into the presentation a little more, our fourth and fifth graders have not had as much of a need for the devices at home as maybe we thought they did, so that's something that we're taking a look at as we're moving forward with our plan. Canvas is our learning management system, and so, of course, we're tracking usage on this. This is where teachers upload different information to share with the students. They can grade assignments on Canvas, they can, students can submit things via Canvas, and our usage has definitely shot up there as well. You know, somebody had asked me about media recordings. What is that? There's great opportunities for students to submit videos or voice recordings, maybe it's a foreign language opportunity or a music opportunity, so that way they don't have to take up that valuable class time and can still listen to those students individually. GoGuardian is our secondary filter system, so this just really tracks all the different websites that the kids are on. GoGuardian provides a wealth of information for us and the teachers. They're able to monitor their classroom, their student usage, but this is just, you can see, our students are on Google Docs quite regularly. YouTube is on there, it's our second highest tip, but there are a lot of great informational things out there for students to utilize or to submit assignments via YouTube, so while it sometimes might be a little controversial, it is a great learning tool for our students, and I think it's important to teach them the value of that and how to use it appropriately. And along with that, we are, our technology department is tracking breakage rates, just to make certain, you know, that we had enough allocated towards that. We haven't had a huge number of breakages, but of course, anytime you're adding more devices, that's going to be natural, so they do a great job of tracking that information for us, so we can keep the pulse on that and see if there's any, you know, if a certain building is spiking, why is that? Do we need to be talking about different care options and things for those devices? With that, I will ask Jake and Stephanie, our two instructional technology coaches, just to come up, they're going to share a little bit of information with you. Come on up, guys, and come on over, and I'll step to the side and let them talk here for just a minute or two.
All right, so this first slide shows our percent of teachers that we've reached this year, and the first column of the bar graph, I'm pointing at the computer, like you can see, the first column is seventeen, eighteen. We've made ourselves available this year to approximately two-hundred teachers, that's the K-eight teachers, and we've reached a hundred and eight teachers, and that's what we've reached that we can track on the computer. We have daily digital sign-ups that they can, they can schedule us for half-hour time slots where we come in and meet with them, work with their class, do whatever we have, and a hundred and eight teachers have utilized those appointment slots. Now, that number's probably higher, but we don't have the data to back it up, so we can't put a number to it. So the number we can put to it is a hundred and eight teachers, and that's outside of just casual conversations, hey, you're in the building, can you come in my room real quick, that kind of stuff. So, that puts us at fifty-four percent of teachers we've reached in our first year. Next year, moving forward, if we push into the high school, which we've already come to the high school a few times and worked with teachers, that's roughly two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-sixty teachers that there will be. Our schedule right now is pretty jam-packed, so we put our predicted line at, if we met a hundred and eight right now, we'll be meeting a hundred and eight at this time next year as well, so that drops us down to thirty-nine percent, whereas if we had another person available with us, it'd bump us up to fifty-eight percent, so an increase. I guess that's all I've got for our slide.
Teachers have the option to sign up for digital learning appointments with Jake and myself, and this is just some of the topics that teachers want more information about, and Jake and I can either research that and bring information for teachers at that time. We can walk them through what it looks like. We've taught classrooms, we've done small groups of students, and just basically supported the teacher in whatever it is that they need in order to be successful integrating technology. We've definitely been focusing on making sure digital citizenship is at the forefront and making sure that they're not just using tech for tech's sake. That being said, at a later time, if you click on teacher testimonial, thank you to a document, we have several teachers that offered how they felt about having instructional coaches, and I just have a couple that I thought I'd read really quickly. This is from a second-grade teacher in our district. She said, "I have really benefited from the work of both instructional coaches this year. I've been able to learn new tech skills, resources, in large part due to Stephanie and Jake. The energy they both bring to training during PLC is contagious. Even better, the individual coaching sessions are invaluable. Perhaps the most valuable aspect of having technology coaches in our district is the culture it creates. Having instructional coaches sends the message that passion for growth and professional development is crucial. It sends the message that we encourage teachers to continuously seek new ways to inspire and guide student learning for the 21st century. It sends the message that teachers are experts in their field, and their ideas are not only honored, but truly deserved to be shared. Stephanie and Jake both do an outstanding job of listening to teachers, meeting them at their current level of understanding in tech, and guiding them to learn even more. I cannot imagine this work being done in any other way, and I'm so grateful to be a part of a district that sees value in this too." And I have one more from an elementary music teacher. "I would like to share words of appreciation and thanks for our district tech coaches, Stephanie Pitser and Jake Brosman, for their faithful, skilled tech help. I have grown in my tech knowledge in ways I could never have imagined six months ago. They helped me create my YouTube channel with playlists, and I can now save songs and videos in my music classroom. As a result, we are ready to share Grade Four on their Canvas page to learn about recorders. But if that wasn't cool enough, the newest and greatest has to be for me, my flipgrid assignments. My kiddos can be creative and learn at the same time. I now can say, I am not afraid of Canvas and Google Docs. Thank you to district leadership team for providing this wonderful tech support to meet the needs of an ever-changing tech world." And that's all we have.
Thank you. If you have any questions, thank you.
Questions for Jake or Stephanie before they enter the house, let me know. I did, when I was just looking at your numbers, when you talked about how many you serve, you were saying like maybe a hundred and eight?
Mm-hmm.
So with two coaches?
Yes.
With two coaches, we've met a hundred and eight.
So that's about fifty-four.
Appointments teachers have scheduled.
Yeah, formally, that signed up.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's about fifty-four. Eight, so if you added a third coach, that's how you jump up.
Right.
As another, you're thinking about fifty-four.
And right now, we're...
Yeah, we just based off that number, exactly.
And right now, we're only serving K-eight teachers at the moment.
Right.
So once you add, that's about two-hundred-and-one full-time staff at the K-eight level, and once you add seventy-six some more teachers at the high school, that's where those predicted numbers are coming into play.
So are you serving K-through-four now?
K-eight. We do K-eight.
But I mean, are you...
Yes, yeah, we are also working with the K-three teachers.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Are you able to meet all the requests?
Yeah, there's been some, there's been some long days, but yeah, I don't think we've missed a single one yet.
No.
So.
I don't have anything, but Heather, if you want to introduce Ben King.
Absolutely, yes, and I definitely can do that, yeah. Ben is here, Ben is our technology director as well, so he is here with us, here, if you want to come on up, Ben, that way if they have questions to ask of you two. He is, he joined us back at the beginning of February, and it's been great to have him here with us to support us and to help learn about what we're doing, so.
Thanks, we often see new faces in the audience, but we never are really formally introduced, and so nice to see your face.
Welcome back.
Yeah, yeah.
So with the plan, and what Jake and Stephanie said, I think it's important to note, too, those hundred and four teachers, that's voluntary for them to sign up for that as well. I mean, they're coming in during their preps, the teachers are, they're giving up that prep time or meeting before or after school. That isn't anything that they're being tied down to do, so I think it's great to see those numbers and have that be a voluntary choice on their part. So, the committee met a couple times this year, and we're following the same rollout recommendation to move on to the high school for this next year. Once this were to go through, the committee will meet again this spring to reevaluate, you know, where we need to be for 2019, 2020, and thereafter, you know, are we going to continue on that same trajectory of what we had? Those are some discussions that we will, we will continue to have with that committee. Along with that, we are recommending with this that we do add one tech support staff member and one other instructional coach position for next year to go along with the rollout plan. You know, if we're adding another, it'll be approximately fourteen hundred devices when you take the whole high school into account. We definitely need another set of, another person to be answering help tickets or to be taking a look at troubleshooting or fixing devices, so that would go with that, and as Jake and Stephanie allude, to the instructional coach position is very valuable, and we'd like to add another one of those as well. So, then you get down to the cost, you get down to the numbers. So, I included last year's numbers on there for you as well, so that you could see what was approved, what our device costs were. Devices have gone up a little bit. Chromebooks went up by thirteen dollars per device when I'm working with our companies and where they're at, and that's, that's pretty standard for devices. So, what we would be looking at is the device costs are there, the six-hundred-and-fifty figure for the one tech support staff, that figure is there, curriculum support staff, so there is our total, the seven-sixty-seven, four-thirty-three, twenty-five. Without the technology fees, our overall costs are lower than they were last year, that five-seventy-eight, but then total budgetary-wise, of course, our current staffing, we need to go into that, so the total difference is that eight-twelve, two-seventy-nine, so it's a hundred-and-four-thousand-dollar difference in the budget compared to last year, or this current year, I should say, is what would be, what would need to be allocated towards that. Questions on that? Okay, great, that is actually all we have for you tonight, so any other, any other questions for me or for Ben?
Thank you so much.
No, and Jake and Stephanie, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Wherever they are.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Information regarding the out-of-state field trip to Washington DC Williamsburg for eighth-grade students is available for the board's review. Mr. Holmes is available to answer questions. Are there any questions? Okay. Information regarding the out-of-town overnight stay for the robotics field trip is available for the board's review. Mr. Adrian is available to answer questions. Are there any questions? Information regarding the bulk supply bid process for FY19 is available for the board's review. Mr. Bambrick is available to answer questions. Are there questions? Information regarding the regulatory basis agreement with Gorens and Associates for FY18 is available for the board's review. Mr. Bambrick is available to answer questions. Are there questions? Information regarding the formation of a board policy committee is available for the board's review. Mr. Merker is available to answer any questions. Did you want to...
I could maybe speak to that item. We've discussed this with each of you individually. I'm recommending tonight that we consider the recreation of a policy committee for the board. I know at one time that there was a policy committee, and the board is going back to committee as a whole. I think for many things, committee as a whole is perfect. Two weeks ago at Valley was a perfect example of committee as a whole. We all needed to be there. Policy is a little different. Policy can be, well, long, wordy, and, you know, you can get hung up on a sentence or two that can take quite a bit of time. It can be something that we can engage in more discussion with a smaller group. Now, all seven of you would be certainly welcome to come if you want to be part of policy committee, but I think it's something that is better served in a smaller group. It is something where we can, we can have more extensive discussion, we can invite the union in when we have issues that are relative to the union, we can invite administrators in when we have issues that are relative to administration. If we have athletics, we invite Katie to come in, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, as the items are appropriate, I feel it would be better served to go back to a smaller committee. So, tonight's just information. I would ask that we consider that and take a vote next month as to whether to go back to a smaller committee for policy.
I think our question was, we wanted to make sure that this was a good use of time, and since policy is what the board does, we, you know, one of our thoughts was, well, is this really something that the entire board really should be involved in? And completely understand what you're saying, I can appreciate that, and I don't, so for the routine, you know, I guess we could just work out the, you know, interworking of the committee, because I don't know if we need to meet all the time, you know, and how that would, and we can, I guess, adjust that as we go, right, and meet more when we need to meet more. Cheryl had some good insight, too.
Yeah, we talked about it when we met with you in the administration last week prior to the meeting, so we could get into in-depth conversations as board members with the administration. And it does sound like a good idea, because our board books, when they come on our computers, can be three-hundred-and-fifty or four-hundred pages, and it is a marathon, you know, prep session, because you really, it's very important as board members when we set the policy, but we do get guidance from the ISBE, and they have their army of lawyers that review it and make recommendations, and it's usually based on case precedent or changes in statutes. When we do it as a committee as a whole, I'd say in the last three years, there probably hasn't been more than five minutes of conversation per board meeting as a board, you know, questions that we might ask the administration. So, while it's a marathon reading for all of us, my sense is that everybody does read it, because it's a very important role that we play.
Sure.
So, time-wise, I'm not sure that we're going to save time, but the engagement with different parts of the administration and the faculty and the union is really important, so it could serve that purpose quite well.
And maybe that's what we need to get together.
And my understanding is that we would still, we would still have it as an information item and then as an action item.
The approval process, yes.
This is just an extra step, right?
The approval process doesn't change.
Okay.
You know, when, the policy committee would make recommendations to the board, and if there were a group of them tonight, they would be recommended tonight, they'd lay on the table for 30 days, and you would have the final approval in March. That part doesn't change. Really, the part that changes is instead of meeting as a committee as a whole at 5:00 and doing policy, that that, that meeting simply goes to another time with a smaller group at another time. So the review process, smaller group at another time, and the approval from the board level is exactly the same.
The value that I find in the committee is discussion from everybody else, because sometimes you, you know, someone else sees a different point of view and raises really good concerns or, you know, comments that they may have, and so as long as we are all involved and can hear those comments, I think those are important.
And we would still be able to have that at the information discussion section of meetings.
Yes, absolutely.
Randy, how would you envision, I like the idea of obviously more input from the staffing and such, how would you, would that be on, you would identify that of those issues and then invite them to those meetings specifically?
That'd be on me. Yeah, I'd go through all the policies in advance, see what...
What really impacts them and get the, okay.
Exactly.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because we talked to that, about that briefly today, just to make sure the staff gets what they need, so they're not left out of the loop. And then at last minute, they're, you know, called in to say, hey, what are your thoughts on this?
Those are pretty easy to recognize as what's going to fit different factions of our community.
I just have one question to what Beth and Cheryl were saying. Do you envision this, the two people on this committee to go through the press policies from ISB and review those and then bring any changes or recommendations to the board? Because as Cheryl was saying, we all are going through those policies as we go through the board book, and so, I mean, unless they're, are they going to be updating us on their recommendations for those policies if they're catching something? Is that the purpose of the group?
Absolutely, because the policies come through for the Press Plus, they'll be legal, and, and we're, we're going to follow law. But there's also things that come through in policy that fit your district differently than it fits the boilerplate district that ISB serves all throughout the state. So we may want to do something slightly differently in district than the recommendation of policy. I've seen that over and over and over, over the years, where, well, here's a recommendation from Press Plus, but for our district, yeah, we're not going to do that, we're going to do this. And, and if that is a recommendation of committee, well, that still comes to the full board. The full board still has that same opportunity to hear that and review that, and, and the voting process is exactly the same. So if committee makes a recommendation that would be slightly different than Press Plus, that's okay, it still comes to the full board and that, that part doesn't change.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I missed item H, thank you, Beth, so I will move to that right now. Information regarding summer projects for 2018 is available for the board's review. Mr. Bambrick and Mr. Grimm are available to answer questions, are there questions?
I have one, and I thought I wasn't paying attention and missed that, but I'm like, what happened? My question to you, and maybe you know this, as I'm looking through, through this, I know from, from what I do, there's a lot of Ameren rebates coming back. Do you know, can you quantify what you expect to receive back in Ameren rebates?
We can. It starts off, the actual rebates are small, the larger savings comes through the course of your recoupment on...
Absolutely.
On fewer costs, but I would have to be, you know, I get that to you, but I don't have one minute.
No, I just thought maybe it's not necessary.
We can certainly do that, though.
But I just wanted, because there's quite a large dollar amount here for energy, and I completely understand the payback, how quickly it comes, I know Ameren rebates tend to, those are a lot of money, too.
Sure, definitely quantifiable, though, and that's something I can share with, you know, I can send that out to everybody.
Because potentially we could, right, use that to do something that needs to be done as well.
Sure. Any other questions? I would just like to point out that, you know, it's, we consider it to be pretty much a budget-neutral item, the costs are very similar to what, what you did last year. And a lot of these, you know, some of these, particularly some of the Ameren rebate types are second-year or a three-year program, so.
Good, thank you.
The only thing I had brought up before in the meeting was just the maintenance, and I know I had requested that, and at some point, just to look at the maintenance of our athletic facilities just over time. So we see more than just the summer project snapshot.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Information regarding future agenda items is available for the board's review. The board will review requested agenda items for future board meetings. Do we have any new ones?
No, no new ones, just one...
Does anybody have one, one to submit today? Okay. Mr. Merker will present information regarding personnel. I'm sorry.
Okay, I don't know, I need glasses, I guess.
Information, well, these are from distance, so I need the other glasses. Information regarding a requested agenda item to establish a documentation process for not following district expert recommendations is available for the board's review. Are there any questions?
Yeah, probably want to review that?
Sure, I, I, me too.
Either way, I don't, I don't mind either.
This was an item, excuse me, that Mrs. Brosman presented to us before my time, but we found the item again and brought it back forth to look at during this month. And again, we're here for information this month and final approval next month. So what this item was about was that if we have information presented by district experts, and experts is a term that I, you know, maybe could use in quotes, because that could, that could cover a lot of areas, it could cover architects, engineers, auditors, financial experts, attorneys, it could cover a lot of areas. If, if an expert that we have employed of the district makes a recommendation and the board chooses to go in another way, then this form would kick in. All right, so let me make an example up. If the auditor says, as a financial practice district, you need to do this, and the board hears that, and the board decides, no, we're not going to do that, and we take a formal vote, and as a board, we're going to do this, well, that's when this process would kick in. And this process would ask you to, and we've just simply created a night, an easy little form, we list the agenda item, we state what we have in that particular agenda item, excuse me, I'm getting to the wrong form. Let me get to the right form, here we are. We had a recommendation from the district expert, we would have a summary of what the discussion was, we would put in the minutes from what actually happened in that meeting and what the actual vote was. The purpose is to keep history. If the auditor recommends this, we do that. It gives us then history of why that occurred, and I think that was the missing component. And we spent a great deal of time talking with Dawn about this item, and as we did that, one of the ends of the conversation was that she said, and I totally agree with her, that it'd be great to be able to look back in two years and realize that we've never used this document. But it is a document that would be available, that if the majority of the board votes against district expert, someone from that majority vote of the board would be responsible for filling out this document. Does that accurately summarize that?
I think so, and I think we discussed it, it could be any board member that, that could fill out the, you know, the form. So, I mean, because obviously if there's contention or if there's an issue where the majority feel that they're going in a direction for, for a specific reason, if they, they may not choose to document it, so one of the other board members, even if he voted not for it, you still could present that form and still have that factual information documented. So historically, if you come back and we see that our lawyer recommended us to do something that we didn't do, if there's an issue or the next board that's elected is wondering, why did it, why would they do that? This would be a documented form that you could come back and see, oh, well, I see it was a 4-3 vote, and they did it, you know, on here, the summary says they did it for this reason. And so there would be a historical record of why that took place.
And part of the logic of this is the minutes of a board meeting are typically not very lengthy, and it'll record the vote, but it won't record any reasoning. And so reasoning, I think, is, it was a key factor of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Information today and vote for next month.
Any other questions? If anybody has any questions on the form, you know, feel free to give me a call, or, you know, Jack or Randy, I'm sure you'll be happy to answer questions as how it was developed, and, or if there's any changes that you see to the form. You know, it's pretty standard, pretty simple, it's very similar to the agenda, future agenda item request form.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think it just leaves that record, and I think there was a question before of where this goes. So I think this, this would be filed with those minutes, is that what we're thinking when that vote was taken? And obviously, electronic form of this filed in its own folder would be the best place that we could easily find it, and it wouldn't be buried in thousands of documents.
Yeah, I'm hesitating, but I got to think about that a little bit. Yes, you're right.
We'll find a place where it's not so hard to find it, where it doesn't get buried.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have to work that one out, because I'm not as sure about that one. It can get lost in the 500 pages of board book, we don't want that to happen if it needs to get there.
I think just like the future agenda items, we have those listed and they're in their own bank, and we keep them historically.
Oh, right, right.
So if we do the same thing, I mean, hopefully we won't be using the form very often, if ever, but if we do the same thing, then they'll all be in one location.
That makes sense.
Very easy to file and easy to find.
Right.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess just one point of clarification, because I know this was discussed several months ago. Does this also include situations where, you know, we use a lot of examples in talking about, but I'm not sure it's completely comprehensive of when this form might be utilized? Would it also include when you have your finance director recommending something who's your financial expert within the district? You know, that type of expertise? Because, you know, I think it goes beyond an auditor, you know, your financial advisor.
Well, that's, that's a great question. I would hesitate to call myself or Mr. Bambrick experts.
Absolutely, I would think, absolutely. In my mind, when I envisioned it, it would be absolutely, Jack, he's our financial expert over the district finances, if he recommends that we do a certain procedure or that we follow a certain, you know, standard, then I would think that would be some, that's, to your point, that someone we hire to do, to help us, right, to guide us under a certain topic or subject, so absolutely, they would be an expert.
That's what I thought we decided last, yeah, as we've talked a couple times about this.
Yeah, and I guess if there's any concern, just to your question, Cheryl, I'd like to hear it prior to coming to next month for a vote. You know, if we have any issues or concerns with this, then we should, you know, we should take the time to contact someone and get those resolved, and not come to a vote next month and have an issue with it without ever voicing a question or concern.
I guess my concern would be going with the staffing, such as Randy or Jack, recommending something, the board is to define the what, so I guess I'm a little bit confused as, I get the outside experts, but I kind of am confused on how that would work for internal employees.
If they would, from what I'm understanding, from what you're saying, if Jack would come to us and say, this is my recommendation for you, and we say, no, that's not the, the way we want to go, we want to document why we chose not to take his advice from that perspective, is that correct? Well, and that was a discussion previously, and, you know, I don't want to have to go through the whole process again, but I think the bottom line that we were talking about is if, if six years from now, five years from now, Jack is sitting as the finance director, and the board says, what the heck, you know, why, why are, why are we doing this, you know, who decided that? Then it's all on his lap. And you say, well, in fact, you know, the board had decided to go a different direction at, in 2018. So that, you know, the buck stops there, of course, because you're employed as the expert, but when decisions, the board is the one that makes the decision, you make the expert recommendation, and then there's a history there that the person sitting in that checkup went to.
Yeah, I think that...
And I, I just think that those, I mean, to me, that, that area seems to me, we have these open session meetings, we have the discussion, for example, if Jack would present that, we'd ask questions, and then we would take our vote. To me, it seems like it's already documented at that point, it just seems like it would be an extra step.
Right, but if, if we vote against the recommendation of our expert, then the history and the reason why, that's the purpose of that plan.
But that's not going to be all discussed here, right? We're going to discuss it.
Well, six years from now, I mean, six years from now, we wouldn't, you know, the board's sitting there, or eight years, maybe you'll still be sitting there.
But I mean, the minutes are, the minutes are there, right?
But they're just very brief.
Video recordings? Do you know for how long?
Yeah.
I don't know.
And the minutes don't exactly show the story behind it, they show the vote, you know, they don't really show you the summary of the rationale, right? And so I think it, the owners should be on the board, if they're choosing to not follow the expert advice, then they should be the ones to document why they're doing that. It, I think it puts a heavy level of pressure on our staff, right, to have to go back and then document that, and I don't think you're going to have that kind of back and forth at an open meeting. So this, that's why you would have the document to show that and to spell out in the summary why that's taken place. And I, I think we've seen that happen, and so I think this is a way to capture that. And, you know, to my point to Randy and Jack when we had the meeting, this should be a form that the board should not be using very often, if ever, because we hire experts, we hire people to give us advice, and if we're going to go against that advice, we should have a very strong rationale to do that. And so if we can't articulate that in writing, then that is a problem. And so I don't, I don't see that there should be any, you know, confusion or concern about the process, because we really shouldn't be using it. And the fact that we even have to discuss having it, there obviously had been some level of concern somewhere down the line. So I just think that it, it keeps it clean, it's not covered in the minutes, it's not covered in the open session often, because we're not going to have a back and forth with why we're choosing not to follow your direction. You're just going to give us a recommendation, and you're going to pull back, and then we're going to go forward. So there's not a whole lot of conversation, and it's not really captured in the meeting, in the minutes. So the minutes do exist, the vote does exist, but the rationale behind it does not, and that's what this form would capture.
Okay, any other questions? Discussion?
Or, but you don't want to say the Randy, so I, I just saw some hesitation, so maybe if, if you feel there's a reason why not, I mean, I, I'm for doing this, it really doesn't bother me.
Oh, no, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
I don't see any.
When you were hesitant, I went, okay.
My hesitation is, is just...
Just where to keep it. Oh, okay. Then, good, okay.
That's simple, we can work, that's a detail, we can work that out.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Merker will present information regarding personnel requests for 2018-19.
A bunch of work from here, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Personnel request process. Oh, not that one. There we go. Okay, personnel requests. The process that we went through as a district for personnel this year is, I believe, a similar process to what's been used in years past. Our administrative team met with the principals and talked with each of the principals about what needs are out there in your building. And the principals submitted a list to us that was a, in my opinion, a very reasonable list, and as we start looking at the list, that did not work. Yeah, my bad.
Might be too far away.
Oh, no, I had to drop that. There we go. Um, yeah. So in this list, if you look at this list, this is, this is a three-page list, I'm going to go on one page so you can see it, but there were items from elementary school, items from middle school, and if you look at how it's broken down, the, we have different positions listed, and then some logic on the right-hand side, was this building required, is this based on student enrollment, et cetera, et cetera. So just to go through these fairly quickly, Spanish was a continuation of an open Spanish position that we had from this year. Office assistant was reinstating a position on my parade that was cut a few years ago. Assistant principal was, excuse me, to fill a, the full-time position at Hickory, it would be to make that full-time. Library aides throughout the district are to provide half-time aides at each of the libraries and the elementary schools. On the middle school, the requests are mostly based on student enrollment. There were two requests for English Language Arts Social Studies and Explore that may or may not exactly be one and a half FTEs, depending on how numbers shake out in the fall. We also have a TOSA position, which is a one-year position that we are proposing to place someone in the office with administrative certification to help... to help for a one-year period of time for Dunlap, excuse me, Dunlap Middle School to get through the enrollment crunch. We know that after one year, we're going to have to redistrict and that the numbers will even out better after a year. So we're recommending to put someone in to help with student discipline and whatever other activities at middle school is necessary. We also have for that same building, a secretarial position. A simple thing like getting through tardies at a building of that size is something that's a challenge right now. So that are those positions. At the high school, these are really pretty simple. They're self-explanatory. We've already had kids enrolled. We know what courses they need. We don't have a whole lot of options. We need to fill these positions for next year based on our student enrollments of what we have already. The last page is mostly district office and student services items. We are recommending an additional elementary counselor. Right now, we have half-time counselor at two of our buildings and this would put full-time counselor at each of our elementary buildings. If you heard what I was talking about at the start, this dovetails perfectly into that. Alternative education, same thing. You know, we want to reach kids when they're young. And I think we do as a district, a good job of reaching kids when they're young. But there are kids that get to the high school that need different education than the normal high school schedule. They need some type of different program. Right now, we have an alternative education program that's staffed with one person. We're recommending to add an additional person to that so we can reach more kids. We have to know that we have kids that have that need. And while we want to reach them when they're young, if we don't reach them when they're young, we believe we have a duty to reach them as they get to our high school age. The speech addition is simply based on student enrollment. We just have more IEP kids and more kids that are needing speech, particularly from the private schools. We do have the two district office requests for technology coach and technology support that were part of Heather's presentation. Notice that that's not, I mean, they're here. We've talked about that with the board. They're not double requests. We have simply listed them here. Now, there's two numbers on here because that's what Jack and I do. We do numbers. And at the position requested, there's 11.78 FTEs. On the numbers, on the far right-hand corner, well, that's the number that got my attention, is $609,000. And we did a different spreadsheet that we're not going to bore you with to come up with the numbers for that. But that is a hefty number. So how does that fit the budget? That became the next thing we started to look at. And this spreadsheet, or not a spreadsheet, but rather just a simple summary, talks about our existing salary and benefit obligation and our new cost. Now, by existing salary and benefit obligation, our union contract's in place. We know the teachers we have now. We know what a step is. We know what our percent increase is. We know that we have $551,000 in new costs projected for next year with the union and our contract. And that's not, that's not a negative. That's just reality. That's the way we are set up. So that is an obligation we already have. If we add the $609,000 of new costs of all this personnel in, you see the total new cost of basically 1.1 million. So how does that factor in to the education fund? Now, notice I said "education fund" because that's where all these are paid. They're paid out of the education fund. So we started to do that, a takeoff of new property tax revenue, projected state revenues from the evidence-based funding. And we added into that what we saw as our education fund surplus from this year. Now, notice I kind of paused on that. $532,000 is our education fund surplus that we were projecting in this year's budget. Jack and I will plead a little bit of ignorance to that because we don't know the budget assumptions that were put in place when that was developed, but that was the number we had to use. So we use that number. When we add up our new revenue, subtract out our new expenditures in the Ed Fund, then we get a number in the red. It gives us a number of $55,000 in the red in the education fund for next year. And when we got to there, then Jack and I both kind of sat back and, oh, man, well, that doesn't work. So what's next? And from there, we started looking at options. Now, this budget sheet is simply a budget summary and the $532,000 number is in line G7. Cell G7 spreadsheet, my favorite things in the world. And it sells G7 that shows that $532,000 surplus in the Ed Fund. But as we progressed from there, we started looking at, okay, what options are available? What could maybe we not choose to fill administratively? So we had lengthy discussion at our district office between the four of us as, okay, well, what lops off first? And maybe that's a terrible way to say it, but that was the discussion, what cuts first? And you can see here in option one, we made a couple of reductions. We didn't make any reductions at the high school level because it's all based on student enrollment. We really didn't make any reductions on that page. It reduces the FTE count, but it really didn't do much to the dollar count. If we go to the dollar page, we're still in the red. Lower right-hand corner, still $14,000 in the red. So what's the next option? And our goal was, let's get to the black. Let's get the Ed Fund to the black. And in this, you see all of the elementary requests fall away. The middle school requests, a portion of those stay. The high school requests all stay because they're based on real numbers. And on this side, we believe strongly in what's on this page. We reduced FTE count and we reduced the total expenditure, which gives us a number in the Ed Fund in the black. So what we presented here for the board's review was, here was the original. Here's option one, we reduced a couple of things. Here's option two, where we have reduced a couple of things. But recognize the budget and the math that this came from. You know, this came from a budget that was established in September that you all voted on. And that's the document we worked on. That's the $532,000 education fund surplus. Since we first put this together, we have some other budget information that maybe Jack could go through with us.
Okay, so as Randy has said, we worked on the budget piece. That's all we really have had to work with. And it's almost any district has to work with. So we're good with that. We're good with those numbers. The first sheet that I've thrown up here, and yeah, spreadsheets are hard to see on the screens here. And believe me, the next couple are going to be more challenging. But I'll take you through them. As we look at the Ed Fund, we still see under column G on the top there, education fund surplus deficit, 53299. That's what we worked with off the budget. So then, as we go on, you've also seen this piece where we talked about our local tax levy, what we may bring in, a very conservative number that you saw back in December at your levy hearing, okay? That's where that number came from. Then plus our projected state revenue of 137,909. That's still the same as what you saw in Randy's presentation. And then that Ed Fund surplus. So we still end up with $1,105,000, okay? That's based on budgeted information and projected revenues, okay? And Illinois is one of those states that, you know, we don't get our EAV finalized until April. We don't get a lot of things, you know, information, maybe sometimes till after the general assembly is met and things take place after that. So another way to look at this potentially then is if we take a look at what I've done here through our discussions with some of the board members, we took a look at this particular screen. And what I did was, we looked at our expenditures in the Ed Fund from July through January. Those are actual expenditure costs, not budgeted, not projected. Those are hard, real numbers, okay? So in this particular option, we took an average, or we took the difference of FY18 from FY17 and we got an average. So we had an average increased monthly expense of about $148,700 a month. So taking that and adding that piece to what our actual expenditures were for FY17 last year gave us some projections that we might take a look at for the next five months and what that might look like. So in reality, what we ended up with was FY18, the budgeted expense was about $32,415,000. And in reality, when we take a look at our projected expense, would be about $31,540,000. So right now, we're looking, we could look at projected $874,000, you know? So that's different than that 500 figure, okay? So if we take a look at, you know, utilizing those numbers, with about five months remaining, we might have about $12,835,000 in expenditures. So if we use our revised Ed Fund revenue number, which came off of our budgeted sheet, and you see on your Treasurers report of $32,900,000 in the projected Ed Fund expenditures of about $31,540,000, you could look at a balance of about $1,004,000. So based on, you know, utilizing some of your actual, okay? Instead of just, I mean, there's projections, but there's not as many projections in there, okay? Then the other way to potentially look at this, and I know there's probably dozens of ways we could do this. But if we take a look at our FY17 and our FY18 expenditures and we do an average. If you take a look at your Treasurers report, you spent about $2,500,000 plus in Ed Fund expenditures a month. So if we take an average of that, of those actual expenditures, you're looking at about $2,570,000 a month, okay? So let's take that and project it out over the next five months. And what does that look like? So we take a look at, let's see, our projected, or again, our revised revenues, 32947, that has stayed the same. Our projected expenses of $30,814,000, utilizing this average number, all right? Well, then you look at a potential of $2,000,001 in terms of surplus. So what, you know, where does that lead us to? I mean, we've got all these options, all these things to consider. So if we take a look at this particular chart and projected state, local state surplus was $1,105,000. That was our original number that was in the red box that Randy and I both talked about. The $1,004,000 is the number that I talked about utilizing the difference from FY17 to 18 and adding $148,700 to each one. So then you're looking at a potential of $1,004,000 plus the last option I shared with you of $2,800,000. And that's based on your current trend of about $2,569,000 a month. Okay, so you have that. And what do we feel most comfortable in looking at, okay? And we talk about recommendations and the likes. You know, that we take a look at the average of the first two columns, you come up with about $1,256,000. And then if you take a look at the average of all those columns, one through three, then you look at an average of about $1,884,000. So, you know, being rather conservative, I mean, I would be more willing to look at going with the $1,256,000 figure than the $1,008,000. Not saying that you won't realize that, but in terms of where we're at, yes.
When you were doing the staffing requests, did you, which number did you use?
$1,105,000.
A $1,105,000, okay.
Yeah, that was the number we utilized.
Okay.
Let me jump in and kind of summarize because I'm looking out in the audience. I've seen some of you, you got.
Sorry.
This isn't working. You're always thinking, what are you all doing? When we were working on our enrollment or our personnel requests, we had an amount of money that we were trying to work with and stay within what we perceived as budgets. And as we started looking at real numbers, what really is the budget going to show? What's it going to be at the end of June? That's what we're trying to find. We're trying to get a better budget picture. So if we come to the board and ask for personnel requests, the board has to understand, well, this is what we think we have to work with financially. And I can't ask for $2,000,000 worth of requests if we've only got $400,000 to spend. And that's where we're at today. We saw $600,000 worth of requests. We pared it down, but as we started looking at what we believe to be real numbers, we're to this. And there's options in there, too. Which one is it going to be at the end of the June? I don't know which one it's going to be. And the reason I'm circling back is I don't know the budget assumptions that were made when the budget was developed. And at this point, it's really a challenge to do that. Based on real numbers, it's none of those. It's somewhere in the middle of something up there. Realistically, it's somewhere in my mind between 1.2 and 1.8 as an Ed Fund balance that's going to be in the black. Why is that important? Well, we have education, we have education fund personnel requests that we're making. That number will be a number that'll be partly in the bank, but that number is also a number that rolls forward into next year's budget. If we end up 1.3 in the black in the Ed Fund this year, that becomes our starting point for next year. That's why it's important. And I lost some of you again, but sorry. That is the exercise that we went through from a financial end to try to help make sense of this for the board. And I hope I haven't confused all of you at the same time.
I just want to clarify, your question was $1,105,000?
Was for the personnel request when they came up with the red number, numbers in the red for options, the first?
No, I get it, but.
What number were they using?
Yeah, so, but they use, looks like you guys used, correct me if I'm wrong, is the projected surplus and you added in new revenue to get to that 105. The other columns don't have the added revenue, correct? That is correct. We utilize, we utilize, again, our projected local tax. We used our projected state revenue and then the Ed Fund surplus. Of the 434. To get to, yes, to get to that $1,105,000. Gotcha. But in those other columns, you don't have that 434, you don't have anything added to that, correct? That just can be a straight surplus.
Just curious. So the 434 number was from the 1.1 total, right?
The 434 is your revenue, projected Ed Fund revenue from your levy.
Okay.
That's, okay, then the surplus, sorry, the surplus is 532. Yes. And you use that number as the baseline? Yes, absolutely. And then you add it in the new revenues to get to $1,105,000? Yes.
Okay, I got it.
And what EAV did you use? What percent?
That was a 1.7.
Oh, so you were pretty.
1.7, pretty conservative.
Pretty conservative.
And as I mentioned, I mean, that was the conservative estimate that you received in your levy hearing back in December. You also had a balloon estimate, which really looked nice, but you just can't go to the bank on the balloon. Maybe every five years, you might be looking at that as a serious potential, or every four years as a serious potential, but not typically after you've gone through it. So can I ask, how conf, so we've collected about 90% of our revenues projected year-to-date? Absolutely. Fiscal year-to-date. How confident, so it's about $3 million, which is a big deal. That makes or breaks this scenario. Right. So how confident are you that we're going to hit that $32.9 million revenue number? I'd say I'm very confident in that. That number is pretty solid. Yes, it's still coming, you know, they're coming in regularly. Okay. Yep.
So it's going to be very close to 100%?
Yes.
On the revenue side.
On the revenue side, exactly.
And so do you have a recommendation of which number to use?
Original, one?
This is what's tricky with the expert thing because as you're building a budget, these are all conversations. And you can have a recommendation. You may have two recommendations. And when you're going to your, and when you're going to your board, you're looking for direction. It isn't always necessarily the expert dictating what the budget should be. And so that's a little. And so that's a little bit of hesitant that I have with this expert form when it comes to these type of discussions.
Sure, sure.
But, but-
I, I think, you know, a- a- and again, I mentioned, you know, my conservative side, I feel very comfortable. I feel good with the one point two million, the, the million, two fifty-six. But I also feel comfortable with what Randy had talked about, and somewhere in between the one point two and the one point eight will be that answer.
But, Jack, the one point two, you can still add in the new revenues, that's not the added, is that number, correct? That's our surplus, the one-two, plus the, uh, four thirty-eight, projected one point seven?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's just based on your actual expenditures for this year, you're correct.
That's what I'm saying, so you can add it in, so we'd be at two million with the one point, roughly.
Right.
Number one point eight with the added new, uh, the tax increase.
With, yes, with your tax revenues, but you don't really want to count those on till after July one.
I get it, I get it. But that's just true surplus numbers for this year that would potentially one point two, it doesn't add in the new money.
Correct.
So if we ha- if we use the one point two, would your staff recommendations still be this, you know, what would, what would the staff recommendations-
We, we believe that the recommendations that our, our principals made to us, that every position that was recommended has validity. Every position that's recommended is useful. I, I wouldn't see one thing that was submitted to us that I'd, I'd shake my head, saying, "No, no, we don't need to do that." I, I didn't see any of that. I think the principals made valid, reasonable recommendations and requests. Uh, based on that, if we have the money to fund all of these positions, our, our position would be, let's fund all these positions.
And how about sustainability and growth?
Sustainability and growth are separate questions. Uh, growth is really challenging to predict. You know, when you have Caterpillar doing whatever Caterpillar does, but on the other hand, OSF buying a whole square block downtown, what's that gonna mean? I, I don't know what that's gonna mean. So growth is really challenging to project. What will house values do? What, what did you have from the assessor?
Well, the assessor, we, we could be looking at any, if you look the next couple of years out, they're typically gonna go in, and next year, they're gonna say, "Oh, maybe one to three percent, count on that," you know, maybe, you know, somewhere in there would be that number. Oh, but they're gonna go next, if they're gonna go two years out, they're gonna say, "Well, maybe zero to two percent." Okay? And, and again, you know, I get, two years out on assessments, you know, we just did, you did your levy for seventeen, collectible in eighteen, which we're not even gonna know what the levy is until April of eighteen, so now, I mean, you're just, it's getting pretty far out there. Uh, I, it just, it just requires good due diligence, I think, in, in monitoring that. And I think that's what the supervisor assessment, that's what his point was, was made.
Do we have any information yet about how many homes are still on the market? How many are empty, how many are on the market? That, that would be interesting information regarding people that might be moving in, perhaps from, from the city.
Maybe average length on market, something like that.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah.
But I think you reported, yeah, I, yeah, yeah. And I think you reported, Jack, at the DVMS addition, uh, meeting, that what you'd heard from the county assessor is that there's nothing on the radar indicating that we're gonna take a hit even two years from now. So, you're talking about, you know, the EAV still growing, not going in the negative. Um, so sustainability, you know, a couple of years out should be-
So, so, yeah.
It's sustainable.
He said zero to two, right?
Right, zero to two, two years out.
One to three, or one to-
But, you know, again, when you're trying to, when you're trying to predict your EAV going, going out that far, there's so many things that can enter into that market-wide nationally, that, I mean, we saw that, you know, in, in oh eight, you know, when that all happened. And we still have communities that are still recovering, or trying to recover from oh eight.
But since it's two years delayed, they have some data, because it's a three-year average that they use. So they have at least one year and maybe two years of the equation, right? For the, for the, for the levy?
calculation, for what it will be for, right?
I'd, I'd want to verify that before I really say, "Yes, absolutely." And, and one tool that I, that I've utilized, I think Randy's utilized in the past, is EAV history. Because your EAV history, although subject to market fluctuations and trends, uh, your EA, this history gives you a good visual of what those have looked like. What it's been, when it's been really good, what it's been, when it's been really not so good. And, and then you can use, you can help utilize that, too, in, in determining your projections.
One, another question. The, the request that they made, I did not include the, uh, request that we talked about for security.
I think that comes from a different fund, though.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll talk about that a little bit later.
Okay.
Thank you. And you confirmed in our meeting last week, too, that it's sustainable even with the additional personnel for DVMS?
Yes.
For the addition.
Yeah. You know, again, subject to, you know, with the DVMS addition, yes. And then, again, diligent monitoring of what your enrollments are doing. So when your enrollments, kind of like the EAV, when they're going up, okay, then you have to, you know, meet those demands, and when they're going down, not everybody's favorite moment in time, but when they're going down, do we really need as much staff as we have?
And we, and this is another instance where we wouldn't add the staff if we didn't have the numbers to justify, right?
If we didn't have the numbers to justify, we would be recommending just the things that are required, uh, because of the core schedules.
But you're saying these are already needed, or will it be dependent upon what our enrollment is next year?
The, the high school version is already needed, the middle school is still questionable, uh, and the others are, we're building requests, as you can see on the PowerPoint.
Remind me, Heather, for Spanish, um, this would add, um, two days to the fifth grade?
Right, so currently, this, we posted an additional point two five position that we were unable to fill, that is still in the budget. So, that we posted again, if we can get that filled, that would take our fourth grade back up to two days a week. However, fifth grade is also only at one day a week, so that additional point two five that was requested would take, if we could then fill that point five Spanish position-
Okay.
Would take our fourth and fifth grades back to two days a week.
And that was in option one?
Correct.
Yeah, that was in the original request, yes. That, that'll be a challenge, just because of the nature of filling foreign language unrelated to budget.
It has been, yeah.
Yeah, unrelated to budget.
Correct.
We, I think the summary for me is, Jack and I've talked at length about this. Is this sustainable? We believe it is.
Well, just one, some of the sustainability, here's where I think, it's great we have this, I think, good news bad. We have a surplus, we think we've got money to, to fund all this stuff, but going, this, uh, next coming year, we have a projected new money coming in of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, correct?
Yes.
And then, just looking at our salary and benefit bump for the staff here next year, that's gonna be five hundred and fifty-one thousand. So we have not, that's kind of the thing we need to be cognizant of, and it's a good thing we have, we put, what, almost eighteen million away in reserves. But if that EAV doesn't continue to bump up, we, we could start going the other direction, so.
Valid point.
That's, that's sustainable.
Valid point.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have a question, and I think it's related to this, I know it is on the information side of it. I, I talked to Brian a little bit about it today, is the activity fees, based on the amount of revenue that we have in the education fund. And I'd like to take a look at those activity fees, because I believe, and I wasn't on the board at this time, and, and those who were, can tell me those were put into place simply because we were in a deficit at that time, and we needed that additional funding. Now, I know, I might have been at last month's meeting or the meeting before, uh, we had the, one of the band directors at our meeting talking, discussing or asking about the fourth and fifth grade, and I'm not just going into this piece of it, but those activity fees that were a hundred dollars for basically music students, I believe that's all it is in fourth and fifth grade. And the decrease in, in some cases, orchestra, I think, is, level was, went down fifty percent, because that's a, uh, a pretty hefty fee to pay when you have to buy an instrument on top of that. And I just don't want to talk about just that piece of it. But at this point, when we're seeing that, when I put the numbers together, I was at one eight, I'm, I'm glad you, I would be conservative, too, you know? Absolutely, uh, at this point. But when we see that, plus an additional four hundred and thirty-four next year that's coming through, I think we need to take a look at that, reevaluate that, and see where we can, we are at that point.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because, I know, Dawn, we probably remember sitting in those meetings and needed extra revenue, so you're right, Theresa, that was initiated because of that, and the hope was, and probably Dawn's hope, too, is that if, when we did have more money, that those, those fees would come back down. But in the back of my head, I heard someone saying, "If you want to, you get those fees in there, they never go away." And I came from a district where there were no fees, nothing. There was parking, we didn't even have PE uniform, it was just parking. So, um, so it was interesting to me that we had fees never won, but then to have to raise them. So, I, too, personally, would like to see fees come down. Now, where is gonna be totally up to you?
I thought we need to reevaluate that, to take a look.
And what we want to stay away from is, like, you know, up and down every single year, it's changing. You know, it needs to be kind of steady Eddie, right? Do you have a comment?
My only concern with looking at changing fees at this point in time is going to be online registration. We have kindergarten registrations starting next week, Tuesday. What you're mentioning wouldn't affect kindergartners, so we could make that change prior to then, but it would have to be made at the March four meeting, so that we would be ready to go for online registration starting, uh, March twenty-seventh.
Well, this is a conversation that maybe you, you know, the administration can have, and, and maybe it's just too late for, you know, this, this upcoming year. Maybe it's just something that has to go next year, but would it be too late? Put that on you guys.
No, it's not too late.
No, I wouldn't think so.
But, to, to come up with something, uh, there's two parts. What, what revenue we're gonna lose?
Right.
That's the first part.
It's in the budget already.
It's, it's in the budget already, it's part of the calculations, it's part of the arithmetic. So if we then come up with, uh, I guess that's the second part. The first part is, how do we reduce? Well, you can't make a judgment here on, uh, PE shorts, PE lock, PE shirt. Well, that's actual cost, I, I know it is, there's not a profit on that. Other items on here?
I'm talking specifically about the activity fee, the one hundred dollar activity fee that we charge.
Oh, just a hundred?
Yes, that one hundred was charged for activities.
The arithmetic could be easy.
Right.
Number of students times a hundred that pay it, we could, we could find that. Uh, and then going to some lesser amount?
There's al- there was also a conversation, Randy, about, um, some children are on three or four activities, and they pay the same fee as someone who may be in just one activity, and, you know?
We talked about that at length administratively, and, and the issue of, uh, the elementary music, and we, we believe administratively to keep the fee the same for everyone, no matter what we do. Even all the fourth, fifth graders only have that one opportunity for one thing. Uh, we believe that the value that they receive from that was significant. Uh, now, if you want to reduce a hundred dollars as a group down to another number, okay with that. Uh, but we think that it, we think administratively, that it should simply be the same. We did discuss at length the comments that we heard in January, and, and, and looked at, what do we do at the junior, at the middle school level, high school level, et cetera, et cetera. That's where we landed. Now, if we want to reduce that hundred dollars, just that hundred dollar one, overall for everyone, okay. And we can come up with a number and bring that to you next month. We have it as an action item, we can table it and bring it back next month, show you, if we take it down to fifty dollars, here's the revenue that we'll lose as a district. Um, now, recognize, recognize when budget gets tight again someday, the, the pain that you'll go through to put it back up to a hundred, 'cause that's, that's real.
It'll be back. I, I, I agree with Teresa, I mean, maybe you could come back with some options of, you know, percentages decreases, you know, decreased percentage-wise, just to give us some idea of what's the impact financially, and hopefully, at that time, Jack will have our firm numbers.
If we leave everything the same, with the exception of the hundred dollar fee, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Activity fee, yeah.
Okay, easy.
And I think the main concern, Teresa, was it at, it was at the, um, the younger level, right?
The elementary school level.
Yeah, fourth and fifth. And, and I, I agree that it's easier to keep the hundred dollars the same, but I do agree that there is a vast difference between the availability of what you can participate in at the high school level in sports and other activities, as opposed to that elementary, you know, level. Um, so perhaps we can look at that, and that can play into the options.
And the reason I, I say that, too, is I think that the program in the elementary school for the music program is definitely losing participation because of that one hundred dollar fee. You're absolutely right, that's the only, those are the only activities in the elementary school that charge that one hundred dollar fee.
And so are they going to-
We actually haven't seen those, Heather?
I have those numbers, he did, but after that was brought up in February, I did. I had some elementary secretaries who are fabulous at running some numbers for me, um, to take a look at what we're at. Numbers do fluctuate from year to year, but they have not gone down. For example, um, band this year, I have it by building, band this year at Ridgeview is at twenty-nine, they were at twenty-six last year. Twenty-nine's actually their highest number. Orchestra is down at Ridgeview this year, they were at fifty last year, and they're at thirty-eight this year. That is one that went down. Um, then when I go to Dunlap Grade School, they're down by three students in band from last year, and down three students in orchestra. Um, Hickory Grove is up four students in band, um, down ch-ch-ch-ch, seven students in orchestra. Wilderweight is down, um, fifteen kids in band, up by, um, ch-ch-ch, nine kids in orchestra. So it, it fluctuates, and then I've got Banner as well, they are down five kids in band and up five kids in orchestra.
Do we have a total?
Yeah, I think that's the better way to do it, if you have a total of them. Can you do that year over year, as to when that activity fee started? I don't know what-
Yeah, we went back to two thousand fifteen with these numbers, which I believe was the year the fee went up. I don't know what it was prior to them, but I don't know, orchestra was that? I know, I'd have to look at when orchestra went into place, band's been in place longer.
Oh, orchestra's been in more years than that, 'cause my-
Right, but I'm trying to think how many years back, I would need to go, I could do the research on that.
Right, yeah, if you could do that, because I got different numbers here, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, and if you could get with band directors to check it from those as well?
Sure, we have them, they had to pull this information from SIS, because Power School does not go back. I actually just had an orchestra teacher email me to ask for rosters, 'cause they themselves cannot look at the rosters in Power School from year to year back. So I had secretaries digging through the state system to pull these numbers for us.
Gotcha, yeah, marry them up together, make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, and I could get together with the music teachers to see, to make sure that we're on the same page.
Perfect.
And our kids that are free and reduced don't pay the fee?
Correct, they do not.
So we're certainly not excluding anyone.
Yeah, and, and my math might be a little wrong, but I think you're down sixteen in band and down eight in that, in orchestra.
So sixteen out of whatever that total is, that could be ten percent if it's one sixty. So that's what I'm trying to look to see.
Gotcha, what that, okay, what the overall, I follow you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, when we get to action items, if we want to table that, until next month, we'll just bring that back next month.
I just, I just wanted to clarify one thing, too. You had a concern about the form and, and the budget conversation being something that maybe, and I agree with you, that, 'cause that is a moving target. And I think in this situation, the experts would be, you know, Jack and Randy, and they're bringing us multiple options. So in that case, that, that wouldn't qualify for what I'm considering an expert recommendation. That's more of a concrete thing that we've been told, this is what you should do, this is what we've been advised to do by our attorneys, and then we do something different, something very concrete, not something that has multiple options. So I agree with you.
Thanks.
So the form wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, any other questions about the, uh, personnel requests for twenty eighteen, nineteen?
Thank you, Jack, for everything you've done, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
No, I just wanted to say, in our meeting, and I appreciate the time we spent going through those requests, just that I agree with what, with what you said, that we discussed in the meeting, that it seems like our administration and staff were very thoughtful in those requests. And there, there, there's not a lot of fluff there, these are things that are very important and very needed. And I, it seems like you're being very conservative with the numbers, looking at one point eight to two point one. If you're using one point two, and that covers allowing our staff to have the requests that they've made, then I, I would be in agreement with option one, because that is still being conservative, absolutely.
The original.
And put in those options.
The original, not option one, but the original.
Okay, yeah, the original request, absolutely.
Okay, any other comments or questions regarding personnel requests? Okay, this will conclude the information discussion items segment of the meeting, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, are there any clarifications or discussions, items regarding the consent agenda?
Let me just clarify the board policies. We went in and cleaned up the, uh, name changes that were necessary, and Mrs. Ricky will do the same thing in July, when, uh, Mr. Van Buren and I leave.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I move to approve the consent agenda presented in the February twenty-one, two thousand eighteen Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Teresa, was that? Holeshauser, there are discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Humbles?
Aye.
Holeshauser?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
DeSharon?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. This time, we'll move on to the action items segment of the meeting. Samwen?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. This time, we'll move on to the action items segment of the meeting. The bill list, treasures report, and district investment report are included in the board packet for review by the board. Mr. Bamberick is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions?
So, Jack, I just have a couple of questions. We talked previously about opening or moving some of our other funds into the Schwab account. Have you been able to figure out whether we can do that with, by putting it into Schwab currently, or do we have to set up a separate account? I'm sorry, I didn't ask you this the other day.
No, that, that's okay, no problem. Um, yeah, I, you know, we do, we have some funds that we can move around. I just don't know, you know, if we want to make it to the Schwab account, or if we want to do something more short-term. Um, I tend to lean, again, I'll go to my conservative side. I tend to lean more toward the short-term through now, from now through the end of the year, with ninety percent of our revenue in, okay? I don't see that we're going to have a problem, but if we did have a shortfall, I'd like to be, you know, be able to have that opportunity to cash, you know, something...
I was just going to think, like, in transportation, we've had some excess funds in that balance, that, like, two or three million dollars.
We, yeah, and we need to take a look at, at how much of that we can move around.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve payment of the bills.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of three million, five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and twenty-two cents as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Brian Zallin, seconded by Theresa Holzhauser. Is there discussion? Roll call, vote please. Samwen?
Aye.
Holzhauser?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Information regarding the student handbooks for 2018-19 is included in the board packet for review by the board. The building principals are available to answer questions. Are there any questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the student handbooks.
I move to approve the student handbooks for 2018-19 as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Beth Ree, seconded by Dawn Bozeman. Is there discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Ree?
Oh, aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Holzhauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Samwen?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Information regarding the DVMS expansion project is available for the board's review. Mr. Merker is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions?
This is the formal approval to move forward with the expansion project. Matt Bechel is here, in case we have any last-minute questions, but I think they did a great job a couple of weeks ago with us. I'm hopeful here that we're ready to move forward tonight and proceed.
I just have one little question, Heather, maybe you have an idea. So when I was looking at this today, I started wondering, so when is this building going to be full? Do you have any projections based on, you know, enrollment in the grade school, the grades that are coming up, and how soon we may fill that building?
To fill valley?
Yeah.
With the expansion, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. I don't mean to throw, if you have no idea, you can tell me later.
Well, I have the projections, but I'd have to look, I've got a breakdown. It all depends, too, on, you know, what we're taking a look at. We'd have to do some redistricting.
Yes.
And so, like, it's very difficult to use the current projections without knowing where those lines are going to be drawn.
No, and that is...
But we can do some general...
And I only thought that, because, you know, we filled so quickly, and I started thinking, well, God, we can't do this now, probably, but, you know, I thought, what would it cost just to put a shell up, in the event that we needed to build again? Just a shell, like the high school.
Next to her walls.
The top, for, I don't know. So just some thoughts that I had while I was looking at this again.
I think one thing that's a, a, a concern with it is, is you look at the evidence-based model, I spent some time in the evidence-based model of the new school funding formula, and we look at the last three years of enrollment. Well, our enrollment over the last three years overall in the district has increased. And, not significantly, but it's increased. So, how does that go? Do we have more people that end up moving in? Does Caterpillar pull people and kids out, or does OSF bring people in? I, I don't know the answer to that. Do people move to this area, and our enrollment continue to increase? Impossible to project when the building fills, when you start looking at factors like that. I, I share your concern, but that's why Matt Bechel and his firm have set this up for what's next. And you all saw that, and I've used that term three times tonight, but they've set it up, and you saw that on the drawings for the next expansion.
Just like we did the first time.
I move to approve the DVMS expansion project as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Beth Ree. Is there discussion? Roll call, vote please. Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Holzhauser?
Aye.
Samwen?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Samwen?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Holzhauser?
Aye.
Motion carries. Information regarding the purchasing cooperative agreement is available for the board's review. Mr. Bamberick is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? I'll ask for a motion to approve the purchasing cooperative agreement.
I move to approve the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen purchasing cooperative resolution and intergovernmental agreement as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Brian Zallin, seconded by Beth Ree. Is there discussion? Roll call, vote please. Samwen?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Holzhauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are going to table item F. Item G. Information regarding the hall monitor and substitute hall monitor positions is available for the board's review. Mr. Merker is available to answer questions. Are there any questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the hall monitor and substitute hall monitor positions.
I move to approve the hall monitor and substitute hall monitor positions as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Beth Ree. Is there discussion? Roll call, vote please. Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Bluth?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Holzhauser?
Aye.
Samwen?
Aye.
Motion carries. This concludes the action items segment of the meeting, and the board will now move into closed session. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I move to adjourn to closed session for the following purposes as stated in the Open Meetings Act. Student disciplinary cases, the appointment, employment, compensation, and performance of specific employees of the public body, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, and security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual threat or a reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public, or public opportunities.
Second. It's been moved by Cheryl Bluth, seconded by Theresa Holzhauser. Is there discussion? Roll call, vote please. Bluth?
Aye.
Holzhauser?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Samwen?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned to closed session. Thank you all for coming. I will ask Mr. Merker to present the Freedom of Information Act report.
We had launched Freedom of Information at the course as we last met. And I think I told you, I sent you an email about that.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Human Resources Consent Agenda for 2017-18.
Excuse me, one question on that, um, before, yeah, normally, we would discuss those in the superintendent report at the beginning of the meeting. Is there, yeah, is there, do, what is the information on it, just for the public? Because they see this, and they, they want to know, you know, we generally, generally we give the information on what it is, at least.
Who requested it?
No, no, I'll do that next time.
Okay.
We were asking about the family information.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the Human Resources Consent Agenda for 2017-18?
I move to approve the Human Resources Consent Agenda for the 2016-17 school year as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Cheryl, or by Beth Ree, and seconded by Cheryl Bluth. Is there discussion?[1468.12]